A grid of some sort, uh, so that we're all, um, giving a, uh, just in case we get snowed in with a lot of, um, contracts, excuse me, a, a lot of resumes, so we can weed them out and we can be all consistent with that.
Don't say snowed in.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, such a dirty word.
The way the, the way the spring's been going is.
Another four, another four, four-letter dirty word, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, that's good, that's good?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
When you, uh, Madam Chair, when you say grid, so when the job description's finalized presumably at the, at the next meeting.
Right.
There'll be certain things in there, uh, current government, is currently certified.
Right.
Um, three years, three years' experience or whatever, five years.
Right, and the educational requirement, um, and of course, if it gets really competitive, then we're looking at typos and, and, um, lack of the required information that we're gonna ask from them.
Okay, so if the board could be thinking, while you're looking at the job description and coming up with what certain, each of you would like to see in there, if you could be thinking in terms of check-offs.
Right.
That can be part of that grid.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, through the board?
Yeah, through the chair, okay, yep.
Do, uh, can we get a previous, um, um, this job description?
Okay.
In the present?
That is the information that the board has. Do you have a previous ad?
This is the previous ad.
This is the previous.
Yep. It, it doesn't really say that, I, I think it, that's the ad, but we don't have the, the job description is right behind it.
The next, right, the next two pages.
The next two pages, see this one, that's the job description. Okay, we'll give those back. Thank you for sharing. Okay, all right, so that's what you needed for that, correct?
Correct, and so would the board, um, I guess my other question for the board maybe to think about at this point.
Yeah.
Is if you're going to, you're going to review them and then, they'll be due on the third, you'll be reviewing them and deciding on whom to interview on June tenth.
The tenth, yeah.
Right.
Would the board consider having a special meeting between then and the twenty-fourth for the interviews?
Well, can we make, we could, I guess we could consider it, but we would know more once we see how many candidates we get. Cause it may not become necessary.
We get five candidates, it's not gonna, yeah.
We can knock it out.
And we weigh down two.
Exactly, there you go. So, we'll just, if that's okay.
The reason, right, I, I would just ask if the board could consider that because then you're looking at, um, potentially hiring on June twenty-fourth. With, um.
The start date on July first.
Well, June twenty-fourth with the start date on July first, if somebody's al- already an employed individual, they would need to give some kind of a notice or they could have a scheduled vacation, any number of things.
Mm-hmm.
What I'm saying is, the current contract for the town accountant does end on June thirtieth, so.
Okay, understood.
Trying to not have a gap of no town accountant.
Understood, and, and taken under consideration, seriously, understood that. Okay, the recreation clerical position, um, um, Ryan and I are working very diligently on that, uh, we have, there were seventy-five candidates, uh, we are narrowing them down to ten, interviews are being set up for this Thursday and, and hopefully not on Friday, um, but if we do, um, they'll be Friday morning and we should have more information at our next meeting. Did the board want to meet the final candidates?
Yes.
Before, before, okay, so which candidates would you like to meet, um, the top two, top three?
When are you gonna make, when, we're making the decision in our next meeting?
Um, that would be at your pleasure.
Well, I was, well, I was just curious, cause obviously, um, I'm not around the end of this week, so.
Oh, no, we're not gonna do it, no, 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 we're talking about the next meeting that we're all here.
Oh, okay, sure.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Would this be, um, would this be, and can I make a suggestion, then if this is the case, uh, will you have the final three candidates come in and interview with the full board?
I think that, is that what the board's wishes are?
I would like that.
Okay, so the final three candidates would come in front of the board to interview, so we would need to put that on our docket for the next meeting.
And, and I bring that up, uh, just for that clarification, so thank you, that, I guess I'll hear from you and or a colonist to which of the, who will be interviewed.
Absolutely, you should know by the end of this week.
By the end of this week, okay, I also want to, um, remind the board, advise the board, and I'll be sending out the information now that this meeting is passed.
Mm-hmm.
That you will also be interviewing four candidates for, um, a vacant firefighter position.
Right.
At that next meeting.
At that next meeting also, okay. So we'll be interviewing.
Hmm.
Welcome back. Okay. Moving.
Maybe he won't come back.
No, he's coming back, yeah, I, I'll find you, yeah. Um, invitation from the Independence Day Parade. Nick, or, or Selectmen Federations?
Well, I mean, that's just a.
Cause I know you're on the, uh, board there.
Yeah, we're being, just an invitation for the board to obviously march in the parade as we do every year. The question is, I don't know if I'm gonna walk or ride, I'm probably gonna walk, so, but we, I know, I know we've done that mix, we've done that mix before, so.
Yeah, you always walk. Yeah, we might have to do that mix again, you know?
That's fine.
I'm the lady of the bunch, I guess.
I'm riding my hot ride.
You're riding your hot ride, okay.
You got a seat, you got a, which one?
Which, which one?
Cause she, she can go in a passenger seat and anybody else, huh?
Yeah.
Hey, got the wave together, um, do we need a vote for that, uh, as to whether or not we're going to participate, um, Nick?
Um, Madam Chair, I think the committee would probably just want to know if the board intends to walk or ride or whatever.
Combo.
It sounds like we're gonna have at least one vehicle, so.
Yeah.
So it'd be one vehicle, we can, then our SVP.
No, no, I'm just kidding, I'm not.
Oh, but I'm gonna ride, I know that because of my, yeah, I know me, I, I need to have that as a backup, cause stuff happens.
So there'll be one vehicle at least with the board of selectmen?
Yes.
Yeah, no more than one vehicle.
Okay, so we can, we can notify the committee with that.
Okay, check with Deb and see if I can have her Mustang again. Um, okay, all right, um, I, I, I will take a vote to see if we're going to participate in the July fourth, um, parade, I'll entertain that motion to participate.
So move.
So move, and a second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I look forward to it. And the instructions are there, um, Carl signed, uh, it's, I'm gonna miss not having his signature. There's a request from Saint Mark's Episcopal Church for a one-day liquor license on Friday, May thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, from six-thirty to nine-thirty in the Great Hall at Saint Mark's Episcopal Church, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Okay, and a second.
Second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, he also would like to have an, uh, entertainment license at the same time, um, in conjunction with their, uh, paint and sip fundraiser, the insurance is on file. So I'll entertain a motion to.
What, what hours is that from?
Uh, from six-thirty to nine-thirty P.M.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for the entertainment license.
Yeah, so move.
And a second.
Second.
Okay, I'll, uh, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next request is from the cultural council, they are looking to have a monthly, um, food drive. And, um, I'll entertain a motion for that.
So move.
As a second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, they're looking for a council membership, um, where they're looking to add two, um, high schoolers onto their council. Um, background on, do we have the authority to change that, um? And would they be voting members, is, am I reading too much into it, or?
I, I think that, um, the, the question here is really for the board to consider appointing maybe associate members, to have them on, uh, the committee as associate members. I, I know that it does not say that, but I did not get the sense that this was for necessarily voting membership.
Okay, so if, um, so we're actually, uh, voting on actually changing the makeup of that committee?
You would still retain the, um, yes, but you would still have the core members who are the voting members and then,
Mm-hmm.
um, the student members would be, it's my understanding, associate members.
Okay, and the high school students, they would be from our high school, I'm just clarifying, cause it's not said, but I, I don't wanna assume anything.
Yes.
Okay, I think it's great to get our high school students involved.
And if, if the board would like to see something in writing from the council about them, students being, uh, associate or not voting, because it, it doesn't say it here,
Mm-hmm.
then I'd be more than willing to go back and get that in writing from the council, but.
Okay, is there a time urgency for them?
Well, they wanna do something, uh, se- beginning September of two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
So there's no urgency, their urgency is they would like to have, uh, the board's approval, I think, to go and have the discussion with the superintendent of schools, um, to see if they would be, uh, you know, see what their thoughts are about it.
Okay, so, w- why don't we give them permission to go ahead and have the discussion with, um, our superintendent? That would allow them to be able to, once they get that approval, which I'm sure they will, that'll allow them to also respond to whether they're going to be voting members or non-voting members, and then we can push it all through at one time. Um, board members, for any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, I need, yeah, and, yeah, sure.
Um, do these kids get any credits for this, toward the school?
I'm sure they should for volunteer.
I would, I would think so.
That would be up to, um, the, um, the guidance department, uh, is it guidance, uh, Mr. Mackey? Who does that, would that be Mr. Macarini?
Yeah, Career Center.
Career Center, yeah.
Community Service, I think.
Community Service, right, and so, um, they would set that up and I, I'd leave that conversation between them. So, okay, so we, we will take that under consideration when they come back to us, we have approved the monthly, um, drive and the future, it says, uh, notification of future council meetings, I'm not seeing that just yet. Uh, Nick?
Oh, they, they're saying that they're going to hold some of the future meetings at the schoolhouse, the Little Red Schoolhouse.
Okay, do we need to approve that?
No, I think it's just a notification.
Okay, just a notification, okay, all right then. Moving on, a request, uh, from a resident at fifty-four Ridge Road to improve signs on Pleasant, uh, Street, Maple Shade Avenue Porter, and we have our police department's recommendations. I will entertain a motion, um, excuse me, first of all, is there any discussion from my, uh, fellow counsel?
Nope.
Okay, all right, hearing that, I will accept the recommendations, do I need to read those into, into the, um, minutes? Or do, can I just accept the recommendations of, of Sergeant, uh, Richard Bates, our safety officer?
The board has typically used that latter motion.
Okay, and so I will entertain a motion from our safety officer Sergeant Bay- Bates to approve all of his, uh, recommendations for the improvement of that, uh, street.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Typically what happens is we will notify the, um, petitioner, dequester of the board's decision and send along a copy of the recommendations. And then notify the Board of Public Works and so forth.
Okay, great, will do, okay, thank you. All right, um.
Yeah, we have to call for a vote.
Yeah.
Oh, Lord have mercy, forgive me, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that motion carries, we'll send that notice out. Uh, notification of reorganization from our libraries, uh, trustees, um, Art McQuire is their chair, Charles Gray Junior is their vice chair, and David Boucher is their secretary, congratulations. Okay, um, soon to be taken over by, uh, Selectmen Gorman, I'll do this one, run through these real quick.
I think, I don't know if you have the latest, but.
Number twenty-three.
With all my little circles in there, there's a.
Lord have mercy, no, that's not on mine, hmm, okay, it's all right, it's, I didn't pull up the, the new one.
There should have been another one out here.
And I thought they were the same, because, hmm, hmm, but that's okay, I still love you. Okay, there's a request, thank you.
You're welcome.
Selectmen Federations, request from, from Saint Paul's Church, our, uh, entertainment license for, for hall dedication on Saturday, May tenth, two thousand fourteen, from six, uh, P.M. to ten P.M. on Dwight Road, I'll entertain that motion for that entertainment license.
So move.
And I need a second.
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, that changes.
Do you feel on any more zeros?
No, I didn't. Are there any other changes, Nick, can I still go with the, with our prev- is our, moving forward, everything else is the same?
Board of Health. Yeah, Board of Health, yes.
All right, the Board of Health, excuse me, the mosquito spraying is going to, the Board of Health announces that aerial mosquito spraying will occur on Monday, April?
Between.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
Cause that was a few days ago, between, so have we done it?
No, and.
Okay, all right, I'll, let me read it and then we'll come to you for commentary. Um, the Esalen Metal Board of He- Bureau of Health announces aerial moskado, mosquito spraying will occur between Monday, April twenty-eighth and Friday, May ninth, the JBI helicopter service of Pembroke, New Hampshire will apply BTI to one thousand, yeah, I know you thought I wasn't gonna say it, um, uh, to one thousand acres of wetland, uh, BTI is a non, is non-toxic to mammals, for questions concerning application, contact the Board of Health at four-one-three, five-two-five, five-four-zero-zero, extension one-one-zero-zero, Nick?
I, uh, saw Mr. Esposito from the Department of Public Works this morning prior to the meeting, and he has indicated that due to the weather, and he's been going down and checking certain areas, there's not a lot of activity, so, um, it is highly unlikely that the spraying will occur this week and it's mu- far more likely it'll be next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
You should be, uh, issued.
What, what are those dates for next week?
Uh, it's actually between, uh, the, it's, uh, April twenty-eighth, uh, to Friday, May, May ninth.
May ninth.
Mm-hmm. Are we allowed to go up in the helicopter with them? Just kidding, don't even need to answer it, um, I could just see all of us trying to line up to get on the helicopter.
Oh, yeah.
Um, the, uh, health agent position, okay, I need to give you an update on that. Um, we did offer the position to, Mr., um, Adams.
Mr. Adam.
Mr. Adam Kenny.
Adam Kenny, um.
What's his name?
Adam Kenny. The first person that we had voted on, um, had declined the position. Um, and then, uh, we went, because we didn't have another meeting scheduled and we had some pressing items, uh, with the Department of, um, of Health, we went to the next, um, the next candidate, the next candidate was not available for training. So then we went to Mr. Kenny, Adam Kenny. Now, here's the caveat. The, I just wanna say that those three candidates were, are all good candidates, Lori, um, McCollum, hmm, is that the, McComery? What's Larry's last, uh, McCool, uh, is a, is a great candidate, uh, she just wasn't available for, um, for training. What is happening with, um, the gentleman that we do have, he is available, he did receive a position, a state position, that he was very candid with us, that he had applied for and he did get it, so it's confirmed, so in two weeks, he will be leaving us, but he has taken care of our immediate need. I would suggest that, um, as a board, we contact Lori McCool, and she's, um, also a, what is it, she is a health agent for three towns, is it, already, and she was looking to supplement, and she probably would be a more, um, stable candidate. However, if she were to decline, you would have to, you would have to start another search, um, for another health agent. But I would recommend, before you go to that search, that, um, you, uh, place a phone call to Lori McCool and see if she would be willing to accept the position, the only reason that she was not able to take the position before was she was not available for training, and so, um, as a matter of fact, she was available at first, and then this is, she realized that she had her dates kinda mixed up and, um, didn't realize that it was Easter, the Friday, the Saturday before Easter, and she had some family commitments, so.
Do we have a telephone number?
We certainly do, I'll get that to you. But I have to, we have to figure out if that's the way that we want to go as the Board of Health, that is my recommendation, so you can, we're gonna give you a little test here, you'll entertain a motion, that, that's how we would go.
Well, first I'd like to ask you a question.
Okay, sure.
Uh, we're gonna hire this guy for two weeks?
He's already hired.
Oh, he's already hired.
He's already hired, and he started, and he's taking care of some of our immediate needs, we had some, some buildings with mold and it needed to be acted upon immediately, so.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, call Lori McCool after the two-week, uh, um, stay of Mr. Adam.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, see if she would be available for the job for health agent position.
Okay, so that's the motion that you're, you're, you're willing to move, um, I will move it.
Second.
Okay, so, so, now, any discussion?
Any discussion, Paul?
Nope.
No, no, so hearing none?
Uh, hearing none, uh, can I take a vote?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And so the motion carries, okay, so you're all set with that, and I'll get that phone number to you.
All right.
Okay, um, with regards to the, uh, one-twenty-seven Prospects, um, street, um, Amy, our, our, our former health agent, did do a final inspection on, on them, um, the screen was placed the way it was supposed to have been, and, um, they have passed, we do need to send them a letter, um, Amy, I had expressed that, she doesn't normally send a letter out, however, the, um, occupant and the landlord are asking for one, and at some point, we'll get together and get that done, um, sooner than later. I guess I'll stay after this meeting, so we can knock that out, Nick, if that's okay.
Madam Chairman, uh, could you bring me up the date on that?
Absolutely.
On what, what that's about?
Absol- that, that was a property that had, um, several violations on it, um, the, the tenant had asked for an inspection, our health agent went out and inspected it and found several violations, um, they were, the, the, um, owner was made aware that, uh, there would be fines, um, they did come in for a hearing and ask for an extension, which we did grant to the, um, full, full extent that we could, um, because of us not having a health agent, uh, uh, we had a temporary one during that time, we did not extend any of the, um, fines to them. They have, they are going to housing court, some of their issues are not ours, we were just, uh, with the health, uh, issues that were presented and the violations, to date, all of the violations have been, um, brought up to code, and so they're asking for a letter for that, and that will be my final, uh, cause I was on that, so. But I certainly will see.
They brought everything up to code?
They brought every, all the violations that were on that sheet that Amy had, uh, violated them for, um, she, they had corrected it.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right.
And so Nick will send out a letter?
Uh, I'm gonna get with Nick so that he can send the letter out, yeah, well, actually, it'll probably be Lorraine, let's give credit where credit is due, but Nick, Nick will be the, be the, uh, the train master. Okay, the Summers Road Transfer Station, Nick?
Just wanted to bring, uh, the board, make the board aware that the Board of Public Works, um, and or representatives from the Department of Public Works will be meeting with the Board of Selectmen at an upcoming meeting, uh, to discuss, uh, Summers Road Transfer Station site and some, uh, um, remediation or some measures that need to be taken, um, relative to Mass D E P requirements. And, uh, wanted to just at least make you aware of that, there's nothing that's, needs necessarily to be done today, it's not an emergency situation, but it is, um, a situation up there that Mass D E P is aware of and is now, uh, it seems now is about the time for the town to start taking some measures, to do some things that Mass D E P wants us to do with respect to, um, some kind of capping, uh, of certain areas up there. So, they will be coming before the Board of Selectmen to talk with you about that.
Okay, any questions?
Nope.
Selectmen Federations, um, could we get some background information on that, um, some, some people probably know a little more about that than I do, and so if you could just get that to us, that'd be great. Um, the ACO job description, um, I did look that over, it doesn't seem to be any different from the regular one, and it should, it should be.
It.
Okay.
Pardon me, if we, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, that's exactly the point, I, I just wanted the board to at least take a look at that, I, I really, um, was looking for any input from the board other than to, should I simply make a change and type it up again and then put alternate and put in specifying two days a week? Because that's been sort of the main difference, along with the other one about not doing the, um, the barn inspections.
And I think that's, that's, that's where it lies, um, there's no barn inspections being done by the, oh, alternate, and, um, and the two days a week, I think that would put it right, cause that's what she does, and so I think that just needs to be pulled in line and make it sure, okay?
That, that would be what I'll present then to the board at the next meeting.
That'll be great, and you'll handle it.
Now, what do you do with this, two days a week?
Well, she, there's an, there's two animal control officers, one is, uh, Tom O'Connor.
Yeah.
Is it O'Connor or Connors?
O'Connor.
I'm trying to make him Connors, okay, and so when Tom's not on, Melissa covers, and so we're just trying to get a job descriptions for, um, for every position that we have.
Yeah.
Okay? All right. Oof, all right, moving on, um, town council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, is it good afternoon, really? Oh, sure is, oh, I am so sorry, Mr. Federations.
Sorry, my flight's not till six.
Oh. Oh, Lord, okay, aren't you glad we started early? Okay, uh, which ones do you see on here that might be, uh, executive session, sir?
The only issue that would be executive would be the update and the notice of complaint.
Okay, that's the only one, okay, all right.
Carryover, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Carryover item, uh, potentially for the board to discuss non-union negotiations.
Right.
Relative to the chief's.
Chief, Chief Melis, um, and the beginning of the, uh, he was in appointment.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, his negotiations, we're gonna talk to, talk to that, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Non-bargaining?
Non-union bargaining.
Non-union bargaining, right.
And I am ready when you are.
Okay, my first non, uh, item thirty on my agenda number is the response, my response to Scanon and Associates, that's really just an annual response, um, that the Law Department has to provide to the, um, independent auditor stating the status of potential claims against the community and how that would impact the financial welfare of the community. So the letter is just reporting that I am aware of no claims that would have any significant impact on the operation of the community.
Fantastic, that's a good thing.
It is, it is. Item thirty-one, you've received, uh, from the, uh, I think the Board of Public Works, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, for the Director of Public Works, a water sewer enterprise fund indirect cost allocation policy. I, I believe this, I, I've had discussions with, uh, the director regarding this draft policy, uh, I don't think it's been changed substantially, or if at all, since I had those discussions with him, and, and I would point out to you that, um, at the present time, the, the numbers, I, I don't review the numbers, I don't know whether they're right, wrong, or indifferent, but I, I would assume that they're accurate. Um, but the, the issue that I have is with the policy that's being asked to be signed, and first of all, um, as the board understands, um, when you win and if this, these enterprise funds are created by the, uh, May town meeting, they will not become effective until, um, action is taken by the May two thousand fifteen town meeting to adopt an annual budget for each of the operations.
Okay.
Um, so until that budget is prepared and submitted by the, um, Department or Board of Public Works to the town meeting for approval,
Mm-hmm.
um, these funds are not gonna come to existence. The, the policy that you have and are being asked to sign in the second paragraph under background seems to indicate that transfers to and from the enterprise funds into other town councils will be limited and only upon the mutual agreement of both boards. That's fine if both of you agree as to what those transfers are gonna be, but because the budget is created by town meeting, there's no effect to your decisions unless and until the town meeting actually, um, authorizes or adopts your recommendations to them. So that should be noted, uh, and modified in the form before you sign it. The second thing is on page two, under transitional period, um, the first paragraph there calls for the, um, if I get the right part, that by the middle of two thousand fifteen, it's the last sentence in the first paragraph, it says, by the middle of fiscal year fifty- It says, "By the middle of fiscal year fifteen, which is the next December, this coming December, the balances of the current water and sewer special revenue funds will be transferred in full to the respective water and sewer enterprise funds." That can't happen.
Until Town Meeting?
It can't happen until the, until, until the accounts are actually created by the adoption of the budget. And the transfer of that money would be included in the budgetary proposal being made to Town Meeting. Um, and so uh, in the next paragraph, um, the sentence here, "During the first six months of FY15, the accountant, the administrator, and the superintendent of Public Works will work together to establish the water and sewer enterprise funds." And it's, what that should be is to establish the budgets for the FY16 enterprise funds and to complete any additional, for adoption by Town Meeting. Um, it, just to make it clear that the boards understand that their actions are dealing with how they envision the funds are going to be managed and administered, all subject to the approval of Town Meeting. Because right now, it doesn't indicate that Town Meeting's not even a factor in its proposal and I think that's a mistake.
Yeah, through the board?
Uh-huh.
Um, can I ask you a question, Mr. Dunhill? Is the IRS required, I mean, that's something we have to do?
Establish the enterprise funds? No.
They run ahead of it, though.
That's not the IRS, it's our auditors, it's our town auditors.
Just the auditors, but, but they told us here that the IRS required the auditor to do that. That's what I, that's what I understood.
Yes, correct. Um.
They said to bring us up to the law.
It's not required to have, you're not required to have enterprise funds by law, it's an option.
Okay.
Part of the problem um, that, that exists really is that the water and sewer funds, as they're created, are pretty much operating.
Yeah.
As enterprise funds.
Yeah.
But there's no authorization for those funds. We don't know when they were created or how long they've been in existence. But it's really correcting a situation that's really sort of existed for a long time here. That's not quite in compliance with the requirements.
See now, I got a different impression of that yesterday from you, they told us it was a required thing uh, for legal, legally, you know, legal purposes.
Legally, mm-hmm.
For the what?
That's what they told us.
For legal purposes, um, yesterday, um, the DPW was explaining their plan and uh, and the question was about the enterprise fund and they said that it was legal, illegal for them to continue.
The existing funds.
Doing business the way it is, yeah.
Yes, I, I, I said that, the existing funds, we don't know how they were created.
No, they're saying to, to do the enterprise, that we had to do.
Do it legally.
You have to establish an enterprise fund if you wanna continue to operate those water and sewer funds as you have in the past. You need to create these enterprise funds, yes.
Alright.
But they're not required by any federal or state requirement. It's being required because of the way we've sorta, this town has handled these appropriations or funds that were received over the past three or four decades.
So to clarify, it was actually the, the, the people that did the audit that required it, or said, suggested it.
Recommended it.
For five years in a row, was it?
Five or six, yeah.
Five or six, okay. Okay, so Nick, you got those changes?
I've.
Okay, alright. Alright, then, um, anything else on that?
No.
Matter?
Not unless you have questions.
Um, I do, but they're just, it's, it's, it'll resolve itself.
Okay.
Um, uh, number thirty-two?
Is just a notice that there is going to be a civil service bypass hearing in June in Springfield.
Alright, and?
Thirty-three is a letter from a business owner in town offering to convey a piece of property that he owns or his company owns to the town.
Okay.
And uh, it's just a letter saying he wants to convey it to the town, it's on, uh, what is it on?
Smith Avenue.
Smith Avenue?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and my suggestion would be if you have any interest in accepting it, uh, to, to do due diligence and at least look at the property to determine whether there's any reason to believe that there might be any source of um, problems going forward such as contamination or encroachments on the property. And secondly, whether there's any department in the community that feels that it would be beneficial for the town to acquire ownership to this parcel.
So um, if we can all make an app to get out there and look at that property before our next meeting, is that okay?
Yeah.
Are you on vacation?
No, I'll, I'll come back Monday.
Okay, and then we can talk about it then?
Correct.
Alright.
The second, it also deals, item thirty-four also deals with a land um, ownership issue. Apparently, there's a husband and wife and family perhaps who live at uh, 220 Allen Street. They're going to be putting their house on the market um, in May. And they apparently have some um, property to the rear or budding their, or part of their parcel. Uh, about an acre and a half that abuts um, pine oil.
Mm-hmm.
And they're notifying the town, they're intending to put their house on the market and if the town has any interest in acquiring any of the property that abuts pine oil, that they'd be interested in speaking with the town with respect to the transfer of that property. So, again, the same situation, I don't know whether there's any interest by.
Well, I'm looking at this and this was dated on April fourth. Um, do we know, have a timeframe as to when they were going to put it on, because this?
May, said next month.
Next month.
Which would be May.
So May fourth, so they're already there.
Well, this, it doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna sell the property, though. If, if it's property that you're interested in, you know, we could enter into discussions with them and a means to acquire it if necessary.
Okay, I would suggest we go and look at the properties, same one as the other one? And then have that discussion at our next meeting.
Okay. Although we have to find.
For the group or individual?
Uh, I think we gotta do it individually.
And we have to find a way to pay for it, too.
You can do a site visit together.
You're right, maybe they're gonna give it to us.
You can do a site visit together.
Oh, okay, so.
Without it being a public meeting, just don't have discussions about what you're gonna do.
No discussions, okay. Um, when are you coming back, Paul?
Monday night.
Monday night? You, Monday, Tuesday? Can we go one of up there Tuesday?
Sure.
Okay, what time?
I don't think I can.
About, about nine in the morning?
Okay.
Okay.
Tuesday at nine?
Yeah, we'll go up there and look at it.
That's next Tuesday, right?
Next Tuesday, yeah.
Madam Chair, I have a question with Council.
Absolutely.
If I could, uh, Council, just to refresh my memory, with the acquisition, did this would still be a, would this still be the RFP process?
Do, it would depend on how the town wished to procure. If it were going to be used as addition to recreational land, it could make a determination that it is uh, acquirable under the community preservation um, auspices, which does not fall under the jurisdiction of thirty big.
Right, right, so it depends on which method they're looking to do it.
You just have to first make determination you're gonna want it. Then we'll figure out how to do it. If you don't want it, then.
We'll figure out if we're gonna pull it.
No sense doing anything.
Exactly. Okay.
Item thirty-four is notification and authorization from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission that the Ninety-Nine Restaurant Parent Corporation, which owns approximately twenty liquor licenses throughout the state, has filed with it for approval to um, remove a manager and a director from its corporate board. And um, rather than have twenty separate applications coming up from twenty individual communities to the ABCC for approval, the ABCC has done the reverse and they've met with Ninety-Nine's Council and agreed that all of the materials with respect to these two people leaving the board would be submitted to the ABCC and all, including the filing fees of two hundred dollars. And the only thing that the local, the twenty local communities need to do is file a Form forty-three with the ABCC when Ninety-Nine's files their request for change of manager, uh, not manager, but change of officer and director with the town.
Okay, then we don't need to take any action on that, right?
They haven't received anything yet, have they?
To date, we have, to my knowledge, we have not received that application.
Okay. Um, the, the final open session item on my agenda is a um, a form, a mem- I guess it's a Friends of form of the East Long Meadow Historical Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And to be very honest with you, I, I don't know what is attempting to be generated by this form. I don't know why it's, it's in the agenda, what it's attempting to do. It says it's a donation form.
Mm-hmm.
But the form itself is really um.
Looks like membership, yeah.
A membership form. I mean, the town has, or Nick will have in his records, a um, a, a, a general municipal donation form that anyone wishing to make a gift to the community or to any individual department or division of the community can fill out and submit along, and then give that money to the department. The department then gives that money along with the form to the accountant and the accountant sets up a separate account, a gift account in the.
Oh, in the name of the person?
Department to be used for purposes that the department wants without any further appropriation, assuming that the gift form says that.
Mm-hmm.
I assume that's what this wants to do.
I.
But I, but I don't know that.
Okay, um, I'm thinking it like Friends of the Library, but I think Nick was.
Madam Chair, just a couple of things, um, I understand what Council's saying about a, a form, there is no form. Donations have typically been, been made by a letter to the Board of Selectmen. I'm an individual citizen, I'd like this.
Have we had a, we've had a form in the past?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna to correct you, but there is a form that I prepared for the community years ago to use for any donations that anyone might wanna make to the community, to simplify the process.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's there and if you don't have it, I'm sure I have it in my file.
Yeah, could you get us a copy of that? Okay, so we'll get a copy of that sent over, uh, if you could put supplies with that and we'll make sure we keep that, those forms. This isn't the first time that we've, we've been through this and hopefully it will be the last.
But you may, and, and that appears to be what they wanna do here.
Okay.
Rather than this membership thing, it, it looks more like they're willing to accept donations.
Madam Chair, that, that is part of it, but what they were looking also to find out is whether or not it would be appropriate for them to post this form or an approved form, whichever form, on the town website. And, you know, having that discussion with, with them, that's really a discussion that I thought that the board should have with Council.
Yeah, I would suggest to you, rather than do that, if you're going to do this, looking for the possibility of donations to the community, to, to draft perhaps a statement to put on the website or co- with a copy of an approved form. Just saying, anyone wishing to make a donation to any municipal department or agency in town can do so using this form and indicate that the money's be retained in that department for use by the department without further appropriation and put it out there so that all of them, otherwise you're probably gonna be inundated by all the departments asking for the same type of statement being put on the website.
And perhaps they could, you know, the general statement and then have the links for each, like, you know, with the, a link with an email address or, or a link of where they want the money to go. Um, so like you might have the library, then you might have the historio- Historical Commission and then et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We can, we can work that out.
Yeah.
Um, any?
That's all I have.
Um, any comment?
Nope.
Okay, go ahead, turn it on here?
That's all I have.
That's all you have?
Yes.
Oh, well then.
Should we do um?
Go ahead and.
Meetings, invitations and reminders.
Go ahead and do meetings, invitations and reminders. There is um, Mister Federici?
Yes.
I, I won't take this over until, until a month or so, so if you would do the honors?
Sure, uh, invitation from AMR Dispatch Center, renovation and open house, Wednesday, April thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, from two PM to three PM at five ninety-five Cottage Street in Springfield, and that's an RSVP. The moderators warrant articles taping is Monday, May fifth, two thousand fourteen, at six thirty PM at the Elcat Studio. Mass Selectmen's Association Regional Meeting is Monday, May fifth, two thousand fourteen, at five forty-five to eight PM at the Eastside Grill in Northampton, RSVP by May first. National Grid's Emergency Preparedness Trade Show and Exhibitions, Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand fourteen, eight AM to eleven AM. The National Grid Training Center, four forty-nine Southwest Cut Off, Worcester, Mass. The Cable Advisor Committee is having two meetings, one is April thirtieth at three PM at, at, is it Elcat?
Okay.
The Elcat Studios. And then Wednesday, May seventh, two thousand fourteen, ten thirty AM at the Elcat Studios. Uh, Board of Selectmen Meeting, Tuesday, May thirteenth, uh, two thousand fourteen, at six PM in the Town Hall Hearing Room. And the Board of Selectmen's Meeting before the Annual Town Meeting at six PM, in East Long Meadow High School Conference Room, C three, on um, May nineteenth.
On May nineteenth, Madam Chair, if I can make, that is a meeting that the board typically does schedule. It's a meeting before the Annual Town Meeting to conduct any last minute business for that.
Okay.
Um, so that's why that's on there, I'm assuming that the board would want to still consider that meeting.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I was done. Annual Town Meeting, Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, at seven PM at the East Long Meadow High School Auditorium. Town offices are closed, Monday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, in observance of Memorial Day. Board of Selectmen Meeting, Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen, at six PM in the Town Hall Hearing Room. And the New Officials Finance Forums, Thursday, June fifth, two thousand fourteen, from eight forty-five AM. At eight forty-five AM, Ten Anne Street, Worcester, Mass, registered by Friday, May twenty-third. And save the date, Piney Valley Planning Council's fifty-second Annual Meeting, Thursday, June nineteenth, two thousand fourteen.
And just um, a note, um, Mister Federici, on that meeting on the thirtieth, you're not going to be here. What, I'll try to get it taped, we have a gentleman who's gonna come in and talk about negotiations.
Okay.
With regards to cable access.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, we're into that contract session now. Um, and so we invite Mister Gorman to attend, no negotiations or, or communications so that we can get that, we'll all have a better understanding of what that process is.
Date, is that the thirtieth?
That's the thirtieth, that will be tomorrow. Okay, um.
And whereabouts?
That's gonna be at Elcat.
Elcat.
Located at one eighty Maple, mm-hmm, Maple Street behind the high school. Okay, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to hear complaints or charges brought against a municipal employee and/or to consider discipline or dismissal of an employee and to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel because to discuss these matters in an open session would be detrimental, may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town. To return, to open, God bless you, to return, we, to return to open session only to adjourn.
Shall I move?
Thank you. I need a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All in favor, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, Selectmen Federici?
Yes.
Selectmen Gorman? Selectmen Gorman?
Yes.
Selectmen Thorpe, yes. Thank you.